Where have you been?
That's why I want to consider changing seats.
Sure is, isn't it?
If anybody's looking to talk tonight, we can have a sign sheet here. You guys sign in.
All right, six o'clock. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. I'd like you to stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, has everybody put their name down for public comment that wishes to speak? I would have that list. All right, we have Bob. Don't make sure that you introduce yourself and where you're from, please.
Bob Worthamore Stevenson. Here we go again. I think you've been tracking with the sewers, the sewer. I've been here every meeting since March. You've all heard my story, right? However, at work this morning, I was in Astoria, I was like, I need to be at this meeting. I told my boss, need to take more off, need to come into this meeting. The last meeting I missed, a July meeting, where you had the vote, right? You made the vote. You didn't have the data that councilman would ask for. You didn't have the analysis the council people have asked for, yet you went ahead and you pushed it through. You made the decision that I feel like you already made up your mind, you know? And this is really frustrating. I think you've heard my story, eighty thousand dollars. This is going to cost me and my family. And if you look at that, it's just a disproportionate burden. You look at the different users, the amount of fluid they generate. If you look at, say, a brewery, if you look at a lodge, I think there's not, you know, I haven't seen the data. I haven't seen the analysis. I haven't seen the cost. I haven't seen the forecast. I haven't seen the futures, right? We've asked for this. I told you, I'm a scientist and I'd love to help. I would love to help, but really, I want to see the data and the analysis. Because there's one councilman so eloquently put this, this is a money grab, right? And I don't have the money to grab. I'm working. I was working today because I want to retire, but I can't afford to retire. I can't afford eighty thousand dollars. That's more than we paid for our house, right? So I think you need to look at the burden you're putting on the people you're trying to represent and be thoughtful about this. There's been no notification. I go back through all the different meetings. Please review the meetings. The point I want to make is, it's never too late to make the right decision. It's never too late to review the analysis you have or haven't done, so you can make the right decision. You know, as my wife so eloquently puts it, this is a misrepresentation of justice. We feel the burden as family members in our community. We're not the only one. There's twenty-five other people, our families, that are affected. Evidently, these lists just went out. Again, we haven't been notified yet. There's been all kinds of statements about this. Please take your time, be thoughtful, do the analysis, and make the right decision moving forward. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Michael?
Hi, Michael Berry, City of Stevenson. On your agenda item is the authorization to purchase a new fire apparatus for the city. I know a lot of you, I'm a retired thirty-year-plus firefighter in Southern California. And I can tell you, without a doubt, go ahead and make that purchase. You have a fire engine that's your first-line engine that is now close to twenty-five years old. That's worth pushing the lifespan. I do like the idea that the pump is going to be very similar or almost identical or identical to the other apparatus in the area. That's huge as far as trading, et cetera, especially for volunteer agencies. Also, I think it was wise twenty-five years ago when they started putting money away, because you know what? Save seven, eight hundred thousand dollars or even a million for a fire apparatus with this small city. If they didn't have the, the, the the force site to start rat-holing unevenly way twenty-five years ago, I don't think this city would be able to afford a fire engine unless they financed it, and that's not right either. It's still going to take two years minimum before that rig's ever in service. So now you've got a first-run rig that's twenty-seven years old. And God knows what could happen as far as supply and everything else, you know, as we saw. So I would really recommend, that was a pretty good price. I mean, a lot of larger agencies, their type-one engines are running a million bucks before outfitting them. So getting a rig for, you know, close to six hundred thousand dollars, that's a good price. I think it'll, I look at the spec, the capacity is very comparable. As a matter of fact, had a thousand gallon tank, I saw, for most city engines are five hundred, maybe seven fifty. That's important in this area. So I, I think it's wise that money was put aside. And I'm fiscally conservative, but when we're talking about public safety, I think that's a wise decision to go ahead and make this purchase, approve this purchase. And that's going to meet the needs of the community for another twenty-five years. And I would highly recommend, after you make this purchase, you continue to put money away in the vehicle replacement fund or however you want to budget for that next apparatus, you know, someday down the road. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. We have Dean. Sure, introduce yourself and where you're from.
Dean Maldonado, Ridgefield, Washington. We have the Rock Creek Cove property down here. I think we're going into year four. I think we're right at the very cusp of getting a permit moving forward here after all the different issues that have transpired over the last four years. So we're eager to get started and we're going to take a polluted area and turn it into, we're going to inject about six and a half million dollars, which will add to your tax base. So the small town, buy whatever you need, hopefully, you know, for help, you know, put money towards that. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask me on here tonight. And we're here to be part of the community and get this thing built and move forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Sam?
Sam Canesin Stevenson. A couple things. One for the road department. The Iman Loop Road needs the right-of-way mode. The sidewalk is blocked off until somebody did go out there and clip it with, clipped the blackberries back, so it's a single path, but that road gets a lot of walkers and they're pushed out into the road now. And it's not a neighborhood road where cars go a little faster coming around that bend, just a concern. Yeah, so I assess that gets bumped up on your mowing list. Never mind, it looks terrible. Second thing I had was for related to water sewer system. I was on vacation for a few weeks and I didn't pay my water bill on two days' length. So when I got home, I had this yellow nasty gram in my mail saying they're going to turn my water off because I hadn't paid the bill. Now, it wasn't like I was six months in arrears. It was one month. It was two days actually past the due date when this got up sent out. All of these debates, this gentleman's point that we have had on paying for the sewer system, how to manage the sewer system, how to deal with the water problems, and you're sending out nasty, this kind of stuff turns people against the city forever. People will hold a grudge. So, you know, long-term, we're trying to build a community enthusiasm, understanding, support. And but we're sending out these notices saying we're going to turn off your water if you don't pay your bill immediately. Really? Really? I mean, I don't know who came up with this idea to send bills, to send notices like this out on day one, but it needs to be looked at and it needs to be a little friendlier. That's it. If you want to look at it, because some of you may have paid your bill, I can pass this around. It really isn't nasty. We're going to terminate, you know, it starts out with termination notes, delinquent. Your complete payment is not received, your water service will be locked. And really?
I would like to see it if you passed, wanted to pass.
I would love to pass it.
Thanks, Sam. Anybody else? All right. There have been some changes to the agenda. Also, we're moving along with all. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. First and a second, any discussion? All the way to say hi?
Hi.
Any opposed?
I, yes.
All right, Sheriff's report?
I want to first of all thank Councilmember Cox and Rice and Administrator Wogan for taking the time today to spend some time with us for a discussion. Appreciate it very much. Secondly, are there any questions about the documentation provided to you for the month of July? Thank you for your time.
And we'd like to thank you for the, tell Sheriff Shire, thank you for, do you for your time today as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, and we're going to move a couple presentations up closer to the top of the order. So Ray would like to provide, Chief Broden would like to provide an update on the fire department.
Yeah, so we've had a few meetings. I would say Wes, I, Councilmember Cox, and Anne from EMS had a good meeting about a month ago now, and it was very productive. I think that hopefully Dave felt like a lot of questions were answered and a lot of good discussion about a lot of things around the fire department, whether it's the city or the rural district, were answered. As far as with EMS, like we had mentioned, EMS is working with us at the rural district and also working with the city now, kind of with the goal of looking at what it looks like for the city, if you want to call it gets out of the fire business more, rural district starts to run the fire operations. So they're working with us on the admin asset policies, which include looking at our, getting things like hiring, standard operating procedures up to date. There's a lot of new fire teams, you know, getting those current, also training. One of the benefits of our relationship with them is, you know, their career staff helping us with EVIP, which is emergency vehicle driving, the safety and operating of apparatus. First aid CPR also working with them. We had a local resident donate a car and they're going to work with, train with us. But we're going to train with them at our station, the upper station for vehicle extraction, how we can help out in those side of massive or critical motor vehicle accidents. So that's going well. There will be a lot of questions. I'm guessing there's a lot of questions from the EMS team already at City Hall. I'm trying to help how I can. If they have stuff, sometimes I ask for offer help or past chiefs because they have some knowledge on things that, that can help out as well. But that's kind of what's going on right now. The last thing I wanted to address was just, I had quite a few emails recently and most, a couple of them are concerning some comments I made about me being a volunteer chief. So I thought about the way to explain it the best, and I wrote that down, and this is just going to be shared with you all. Recently, there has been a lot of questions about what it means to be a volunteer chief. Some people in the community and council members have repeatedly, you know, stated that I make fifteen hundred dollars a month between the rural district and the city. I am not trying to discredit the stipend. I'm thankful for it. But I'm still a volunteer chief in the meaning that I have a regular career. I have a family. I don't punch in and punch out daily at the, at City Hall or the fire station. I've done the work for the WSRB audit and stuff like that on my own time, sometimes at the night when my kids are sleeping, sometimes down here at City Hall when I have time. So I do hold myself to a very high standard as the chief. But the term B, being a volunteer chief, is not trying to dishearten my responsibility. It doesn't mean I don't have responsibility. As a volunteer chief, that means I have given up a lot of my privacy and freedoms I used to employ. I know I have to hold myself to a higher standard in the community than I used to, meaning sometimes I don't get to enjoy the weekends like I do because I have a responsibility to lead the team and work with the team when the community needs us the most. The same goes for my team that's here tonight. A lot of them sacrifice a lot of time training and responding to throughout the counties and communities, giving up their time to people they don't even know when they need them the most. They give it, our motto is kind of you give it all when you can. Our careers and our families can come first, that part of being a volunteer. Our, the fire team is always at top of mind for us when we have a pager. It's also the next in line after our family and our career. That's one important thing, and that's, that was, I've explained it to a few of your community members that asked me about it, and that was just my point on it. I am not trying to ever say, I'm a volunteer, I don't do anything, or I don't answer. There's just a process to it. It's, I don't, you know, I think most of you understand that and would ask me if I was trying to, you know, trying to discredit, you know, the thousand-dollar stipend or my role. That's not what I'm trying to do. It's just that I do have other things that are priorities, even though I put, I mean, I hope you all see I'm putting a lot of time into achieving of our department. That's all I got.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, next up, we have, I guess, speaker with Tim Shell from Shell Engineering, who's going to talk about our engineering standards.
Hi, I'm Tim Shell, Shell Engineering and Consulting from Ridgefield, Washington. Just wanted to give you a brief overview of the, something we recently completed and provided to you is the, the engineering standard details or standard plans. Standard plans are something that's used to ensure consistency between, with the various infrastructures that go into the public right-of-way, things like the streets, the sanitary sewers, the waters, storm sewers, stuff like that. And they also cover erosion control and now some details that we provided for the single-family housing construction. Reason why they've been updating is we've been, we've been, I've been working with city staff to update the engineering standards. The standard plans are part of the engineering standards that are used during the construction phase of the project development. The old standards were at least twenty years old, and so it was a good time at this point to update this old stamp, engineering standard details to cover things that have changed twenty years, like construction practices and materials. Some of the other reasons that the, yeah, they're updated is what they're used for is they establish consistency within, for the infrastructure within the right-of-way. So, you know, when the crews go out, they know what type of parts they need and to repair the things that are, that need to be repaired. It also facilitates the permitting process so that when a project comes in permitting, we can give them the standard details rather than them trying to develop them on their own and then, you know, back and forth. Well, that's not what we want. This is what we want. And so, so that's one thing that the standard plans we get is for. And, yeah, like I said, we also, at this point, we added, created some standard details for single-family construction that didn't used to be there, and seems like that's most of the permits that come through on the years is listing the handouts. So it'll help facilitate that permitting process. That's really all I had to say. You know, I think that you all have the details to look for, and if you have any questions on what they are for, what's in there, I'm happy to answer them.
So Tim had worked on this for a few years, over a long process. As you guys know, there's well over a hundred standards. It was quite the, quite the uplift. And given that, we wanted to make sure you all had ample time to review. But on top of that, if you did have questions or concerns, we thought it would be best to have Tim here to help address those. So if that is, you wanted to do a quick overview and then open up the table for questions.
No, I looked them all, the ones that you sent out. I thought they were really good.
I have a question. Some communities are adopting standards for like a single-family home construction and stuff when wildfire areas where they're having, requiring different things to harden a home, or I'm getting the terminology wrong, but you probably know what I'm talking about. And have you done much work on that, on fire prevention in terms of engineering standards and things that homeowners can do? And then there's probably a debate among municipalities over what you require and mandate and what you don't. But I'm just curious if you've worked in that area very much.
That's a good question. The standards that I've been working on apply mostly to the, the public infrastructure. What you're talking about would probably be more of the UBC building code type of as opposed to the public's infrastructure.
Yeah.
So no, answer your question.
Or any other questions you all have for Tim?
Okay, thank you.
Very much, Tim. We don't have this on the agenda of the vote on tonight. The other thing I wanted to mention is we will need to pass an ordinance. We are happy to present that next month, or the other option would be to kick this over to planning, mission, and like there.
It's either vote next month?
Vote next month.
Or go through planning and then vote?
All the options were on the table.
A lot of this is probably technical planning, probably has enough because they're working on the Airbnb issue and stuff like that. So I don't know how much they'd want to get into this and whether that would be. I mean, I'm just one person, obviously.
Right, I'm okay with, with bringing us, yeah, again, I'm not trying to.
I, having been on the planning commission, I'm thinking to myself, what in the world is all this? So they have, they have enough on their table, I think, rather than to try to delve into weeds like that.
Absolutely. We just want to make sure all the options were available. We will bring an ordinance for this September.
If we were wanting to stall this, we'd say yes.
Thanks for coming. I'd like to open public hearing at six twenty-one. This is in regards to a short plat vacation. Who's presenting the staff report on this one?
I will start on the staff report, but quickly hand to Robert for fairness disclosures. The proposal in front of you is for a plat vacation. Plats is an official document that divides land, sets out what one person owns versus another person owns. And a plat vacation is where you go back after the fact and change something about that plat. And specifically, one of those changes is altering a public, publicly dedicated area, whether that's a right of ownership. So you do have a proposal that's been submitted by the landowner to vacate both one lot line that's within the plat to turn two lots into one and to alter the location of public access easements. And I'll go in more detail.
Yes, for the fairness doctrine, we just have to make sure that nobody who's sitting on council who may adjudicate and or respond to this vacation has an interest in the real property, has a financial interest in the real property, has an interest in the outcome of the decision, or you have had any communication with the landowners themselves prior to this meeting. So I just need each of you to vocalize that you do not have a conflict of interest so that we can move forward.
I do not.
No, Mr. Gatt. I talked with Mr. Maldonado probably a year ago, asking him how it was going, but other than that, no. Mr. Rice?
No, I have no doubt.
You are clear to move forward, Mr. Rice.
So this specific proposal is related to developments that's been proposed on Rocco. It's land that had been owned by the county. The county put it up for sale and the current ownership group bought it or one iteration of the current ownership group purchased that. They've submitted a couple of different development proposals to the city. Both of those have been reviewed under the city shoreline management program. And the most current one was reviewed in twenty twenty-three. The planning commission is the body that's assigned to review shoreline permits for you. Planning commission reviewed that shoreline master program. It's about a hundred-page document. And so they're reviewing to ensure that any project is consistent with that. That review includes a review of things like public access and the public access system that's been proposed and how it aligns with the shoreline master program. So planning commission reviewed the shoreline public access that was proposed, and they added some additional conditions to that after their review. The planning commission's approval was appealed, and that appeal went to the state shoreline hearings board to adjudicate whether or not the commission appropriately implemented your shoreline master program. And they ruled it, it did, so they didn't remand it back for a different decision or to review anything or make any changes on there. So I'm spending some time on that because this project and the shoreline access components of the project have been reviewed by the adjudicated body that you've assigned to review those and make those decisions. And that their decision was called in to be reviewed by the state, the state said that they appropriately made that decision. So I, I hope that you can set aside the desire to review that in your deliberations here. It can focus on determining what the public use and interest in this proposal is. And that more specifically, the public use and interest in this proposal is aligning the publicly dedicated easements with the areas that have been approved or required for public access. The staff report for this starts on page twenty-nine of your packets. Includes the guiding policies here and that recommendation that I just made to approve this for a plat vacation. And that's the last step for getting this project going. I will say that the need for the applicant to go through so many reviews is unique to non-GMA, non-growth management active areas of the state. Active areas, uh, of the state where the state has gone in and required a single, um, consolidated project review. Where, uh, developer brings your proposal and all aspects of that proposal are reviewed at one hearing, at one meeting, uh, subject to warrant appeal. Uh, they have not required that at all else. So instead, there's a hearing for the city council, a hearing for the planning commission and, um, several stages to appeal. So when you hear people talk about it, why things are frustrating, a lot of it is our system and we just haven't embraced the things that's, um, the state has forced others to embrace. They haven't forced us to, and we haven't done it. So, um, something to consider for the future, uh, but. Uh, with, with that consideration, again, just hoping you hone in on the public use and interest in, uh, the review of this proposal. That's been submitted by.
So, um, first, um, any comments from the public? Thanks, Ben.
I've been prepared to make a motion.
Yeah, I got a couple of steps to go through first. Um, so any, any comments from the public? Like to close the public hearing at six twenty-seven. Make your motion.
Uh, based on the public interest in aligning the public use easements and public access areas, I move to approve this application for short plant vacation.
But first and a second, any discussion? I'll there say aye. Thank you very much. Who, all right, so, um. Four years there, just bent up.
Should have come here first, I mean.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
So we're just, are we looking for a vote here or just a consensus? Like, I don't see it. Fire engine purchase was seven.
Just a, uh, voice vote.
So we're looking for a motion and a vote, is that what you said?
Yes.
All right.
And for purposes of motion, you just need to recite in there the amount of the, the year span.
I guess.
How to authorize the purchase of that. Uh, one class A number fire apparatus for five hundred thirty-five thousand four hundred twenty, putting applicable taxes.
First and a second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to note that on the proposal, um, it does talk about. Find it here. They are, this is subject to our acceptance of the proposal and also proper contract execution. Uh, so there should be a contract coming forward for us to, uh, sign off on prior to the actual. Order going in, I would assume.
Want me to talk? Can I talk about?
Yeah, so.
Is that okay?
Yeah, the question I guess would be, are we approving that contract by this?
Yes, and that's part of the, um, the Sourcewell infused in Galveston, the, uh, licensed procurement outfit that's approved through the inner, the states. Uh, Fire Chiefs Association that do the procurement. So yes, we enter into a full contract. We'll have a consult meeting. Houston Galveston, who uses Sourcewell, that's who the state has approved to do the procurement process. They handle the rest of it. So yes, there'll be a few, there'll be, you know, like, I will come back probably with, you know, when they start to outfit like the cabinets with. Where we put the S C B A's and stuff, there'll be a few minor tweaks. That's why the contingency funds kind of there, it will end up being a little bit more once we outfit. The, the, uh, put the hardware into like whole tools and stuff like that at, at there. We choose that, that's why they fly us out there three times. Um, but yes, there will be, there's an original, there's an initial to like. Kind of initiate the process. It'll go through, uh, the, uh, the procurement for, uh, Houston Galveston and Sourcewell. Then there'll be a pre-construction, uh, they'll fly me out in the next couple of months or two of us. To do a pre-construction, uh, tour of the plant and what they're gonna do. And then, yeah. There'll be, there'll be multiple times to sign same with change orders and stuff like that. And if you're approving the original amount, then yes, then. When we come, I would say that when we get to the finish line, maybe then we approve, there'll be a higher amount. Probably that we say this is the final amount. That's why I had the contingency in the original, uh, doc, the plan that I've given you over the last few months.
So that contingency is in the five hundred and thirty-five?
No, the, the contingency, I, when I, I thought it should be five to ten percent for the, uh, chassis. And then also for equipment, that's the cost could go up, you know, so I thought that, um, that is the contract price. They have sent for that truck we designed. Um, but I thought, I didn't, I didn't know what, if you guys approve a contingency fund. If not, you could just approve the final amount when it's done and I could update you as they fly us out there and let us know what's going on.
So we're proving the, we would be right now.
Yes, yes, here's the truck, here's how much.
The procurement amount and then we, the actual drive it off the lot price.
Yes.
Yep, you know what I'm saying? Whatever it is, you know, um, would be, that'll be, you come back and say, all right, the truck's ready, here's what it is.
Yeah.
We've got it fitted, what we need, and this is how much it is.
No, Ray, when, um, once you get your hands on it, what else needs to be done to it?
Um, so when we get it delivered, so here, okay, so when it's prepared, then, you know, and this is where you hope it's not the middle of winter. It, we either drive it back or it gets delivered. So that will be the first step. Um, then it'll go out to. Is it True North? I think out in Lo Ha, they do the striping, you know, the putting all the equipment. We buy throughout the process like axes and hoes and everything else. They'll put that on the truck. Then we'll have to wait for, uh, usually I think the place that we've used in the past, like for Engine Twenty-Three, we'll go there and put. You know, Stevenson Fire, all the stickers and everything else on there. And that's usually another six month process.
About the radios and all that?
Uh, in this contract, uh, Twain is putting the radios in for us.
Okay, are they compatible with what the current radio contract is with?
Yes, V G F and U H F. We carry both because we're U H F, all of our five county mutual aid are on V H F.
Okay, but I mean, are they the same radio?
Yeah, we'll go, yeah, Motorola, yeah, yeah, all right.
You know, a question I have on the, uh, agenda, you probably saw it, it said, due to supplier volatility in the current marketplace, the vendors know that the city will be responsible for any. Price increases mandated, and then it goes on. So I was concerned because are we approving the five thirty-five or are we approving whatever it might end up being? And we don't know. So what's the most you? So yeah, what would be the maximum, you think?
I think s- ten percent contingency is pretty safe. Cause we're not, we're not getting anything fancy. On that truck that could, you know, there's no, you know, high, you know, generator, there's, you know, like that's. Um, built into the P T O, you know, the seats aren't the, you know, we, we're, it's a, it's a straight commercial cab. Um, but there will be, because there's things that change, like, you know, um, that, you know, maybe the layout of the boxes or what they do. Or they have a massive price increase. They put it in there because of, we all know what happened during COVID.
So we're looking at probably six hundred thousand.
I would, I, I, I say to budget like five eighty to six hundred, that would be the contingency too. But the document they provided us says five thirty-five in the chain, I forget the, you know, but that's what they said, here's what it is. Because we went with a truck that was just delivered in Idaho. So they're like, here's how much, almost exactly like it, except we removed a couple. Like the hose reel and something else on it. Um, yeah, so they knew exactly, there's no engineering, there's no, it's. This is what it costs for the one we just delivered.
Yeah, I have a few more questions. You know, I think what it is, is I think people get confused when I ask questions and they think I'm against something. And that's a mistake because a lot of times I'll be for something and I analyze the heck out of it. So it doesn't mean I'm against it. And people, so I just want to explain that and, and sometimes when I see in a packet, I think Chuck at one point had said, well, come and give you a sales presentation. That's how he put it. And so I know we've been discussing this a lot, little bits and pieces here and there, but when I look at the packet, I just would assume that there'd be a concise. To use Chuck's term, sales pitch, uh, here's why we need it. And that would all be in the packet, uh. Um, even if it's stuff that was mentioned in bits and pieces through the last year, it'd all be in one place in the packet. And the reason I say that is because I'm the one, if I'm in a grocery store or a citizen who'll say, hey, there were just two pages on that and you guys just. A pretty six hundred thousand, I'm gonna get the questions and so are other people. Because we made mistakes in the past, the city, not on fire truck purchases, but on purchase, where we really didn't do our homework. So we have made mistakes in the past that have come back to bite us. So, so, um, I think what it is, is people just sometimes aren't. Maybe used to hard questions, but my wife and I typically ask, are harder on each other when we do a kitchen remodel than I've ever seen the council be. So I don't think we're being. Uh, mean by the questions. And I'll give you a perfect example of that. And I'm a gentleman, just a few questions. Today I had a citizen call and say, well, hey, have you looked at refurbishment? And the citizen, and I made copies so you can see, um, I don't like to pass things around which you.
Would you want me to answer that question?
No, but I, yeah, and, and in other words, and so, uh, so then my question is, I don't know. So have we looked at refurbishment?
Yes, the starting bid of the front truck is three hundred thousand dollars just to get it in the door and start. Because the front pump, which Engine Twenty-Six is, cannot be used anymore. So we have to cut the front off. Remove, extend the cab, put a midship on, redo the engine and the transmission.
Okay.
So the start, just to start, they said, was about three hundred thousand from two outfits in Washington.
Okay. Okay, so the refurbishment wouldn't be an option. So was that looked at?
Yes.
Okay, so it was like that, cause, um, but I had heard that it wasn't, but it's good to know that it was. The. The other thing is, we know that we're talking with Fire District Two and, and we know from our meetings that. Both entities have been shown, had different amounts of confusion at different times over what's fair on the split with the money. And both entities have said that, hey, we're confused by different things, by our own budgets. Um, so. Uh, I'm just wondering, let's say that when we, and I know that both entities are in, having audits done now and getting. Trying to get better at the finances or a better understanding of the finances. So if a year down the road, let's say we approve this and a year down the road. Um, I'm thinking that we could probably, if we underpaid, is the Stevenson City entity for our population and our in. Thing, I think we get it, or we overpaid, I would think as we continue to have discussions over contracting with you folks. We could take this large, this would be one of our largest purchases into account.
Yes, and I talked, me and, uh, when Wes, I and, uh, Superintendent Luters and Dave met, we talked about that. I mean, if you guys want to take a lot of time, I would compare it to, I just short to, almost like business, taking over another business. There's a dating phase and then there's the marriage phase. And if you say the city, just for easy number, this is, has two million dollars in assets. We say, sure, we'll discount twenty years by a hundred thousand dollars then, when the assets are rolled over. That's all part of that calculation. When there's, there's, uh, you know, when that comes to around, that's why EMS is doing all the. Admin accounting work on trying to figure that out for us.
Okay, so that was one of my concerns when we sat down to talk is, okay, well, we're turning over that, we're turning up there, you know, basically. Seven hundred thousand dollars of timber assets, you know, all of that, that fire fund. Um, so how does that equate out? As far as the city goes, when they start contracting back with Fire District Two. And so that was, that was a big part of that conversation.
Yeah, so then.
We could be at the spot where we order the truck and we would just have to negotiate. Maybe you say, hey, twenty twenty-seven, take it. Like, here's the asset, you guys are running with it now, and it would just change to where the rural district is paying for it. It just depends on how that's negotiated, but typically you would say, hey, you have two million in assets, whether it's fifteen, twenty years. If your price is three hundred thousand a year, we're gonna discount you by a hundred thousand a year for twenty years and just roll the assets over.
Right.
And then that's how, you know, that there's the recoup, but that's, you know, that will get talked about when we get, get to it.
I think you need the fire truck. I get that. And I, uh, the concern was that, yeah, so. The fire truck is probably gonna be used throughout the county, how it gets paid for. And I, my concern was, you know, and I think you're answering it. I have less concern now is, um. You know, I'm just trying to, number one, have excellent fire protection for Stevenson as we all do. And, and thank you folks for the fire protection you give us as volunteers. Uh, but also protect the pocketbook of the taxpayers here as much as possible.
And there was an email, I think, I don't know, when I see that email, I think it goes to all of you. There's an email from, um, a resident of the county about kind of some of this stuff. And I think it said it went to city council too. We have operated a plant as long as I've been here. The city apparatus does not leave the city unless it's critical. Residential or commercial need, uh, in our mutual aid area. And since the rural district got pump or tender twenty-three. I don't know that that truck has left city Stevenson or Carson or North Bonneville in the past four or five years. We always, our plan is that trucks always left here when we go on our mutual aid, because the rural district, reality is, is the rural district have enough apparatus. To pro- provide their own strike team on fires. The city has one apparatus and we understand does not have the apparatus to go. But we, it has gone to cascade locks in the past, like when, um, the pellet mill was burning really good and stuff like that and went over. When there's commercial or residential need here locally, it will go out, but it, for the most part, it stays. And that's also the plan with that, the newer truck, like, we might get another five years, maybe out of twenty-six, who knows? But, you know, because there's no real, uh, uh, putting it, uh, surplusing it value because of those front bump pumblers. Uh, fire, you can't use them, you can't, and in fire service, you can't, they can't even refurbish them. They, like I said, they gotta cut the bumper off and everything. Re, because they're considered unsafe, a flawed design. Um, so that's the new, it would be maybe twenty-six adds to like, hey. Twenty-three and twenty-six are going to cascade locks together to help on a commercial fire or whatever. Because, you know, and the new engine, whatever it gets called and numbered, it will be, you know, it stays in the city unless critical need for. You know, commercial type incident or residential, that's what that four or five out engine is built for. It's not built to be driving a red bluff on a, you know, a wildfire or anything, or, you know, anywhere in the gorge up off the. You know, four and four wheel drive on wildfire, it's not built for that. Any other?
No, I'm, it sounds like any other questions I would have. I mean, like, I'm, I'm not gonna get into questions like how many fires in the last year, cause I, I think. But I think when we get into where we get into the deeper talks and negotiating and figuring out what's fair and what our contract would be. We can get into those. And I, and I, and what I'm gonna ask in return is that we desensitize ourselves to hard questions. Cause, um, and, um, so I'm, I'm. Willing to, uh, just my one vote, uh, to port this purchase this time, but I just wanted you to know that.
Yeah.
That the questions that I felt should have been in the packet this time with this large purchase. Um, they can be addressed when we get into it because I, later, because I do think you need the fire truck. And it's, and it's a, it's a good purchase. It's just, who pays for what?
Yeah.
Based on the use of it.
Yeah, well, and just a little background on that, Pat. Uh, even till now, the rural district pays and maintains all their apparatus on their own. And that's the same with the city's one engine. There's no sharing of cost. You know, I know we went to the seven thirty split, but still up to date. And then, you know, Rob provided you guys a little bit more history on that. Wayne's here too, he could provide some of that. There were times the city was pretty hard up and the rural district bought engines or out. The current equipment on twenty-six was paid for by twenty, by the rural district because the city didn't have the money when that truck was bought. So, you know, there's been a lot of good teamwork, keeping the team moving along really good, but the, the standard has been, from what I understand, the rural district buys. And maintains their own equipment. And it's been the same with, with the city's app, well, the apparatus for the city.
Any further discussion? On there to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
All right, Wes.
So, uh, for ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, that both made. Um, the state has increased the thresholds in their model ordinance. Uh, for business license exemptions. So, um, and, um, as of right now on the books, the, uh. Current, uh, threshold to not have to pay for a business license of two thousand dollars and the state. Current threshold to not have to pay for business license of two thousand dollars and the state's. Model ordinance is decreasing that to four thousand dollars. So we just need to pass this to be, um, pink appliance with. With the state ordinance.
I will move to approve our note twenty twenty five dash plus twenty eight.
Second. First and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, Wes, you're on a roll.
All right, and then for resolution twenty twenty five dash four five seven. This is a fee schedule update specifically just for the business license fee. In uh looking at raising the uh um. Uh exemption threshold, we also uh took a look at all of the other uh cities and their uh. Uh uh fee uh call for a business license and we are pretty much below us in the state. So we were looking to up that cost, let's be in line with the rest of the municipalities. So. Currently, it's ten dollars and we will be looking to increase it uh uh to twenty five, which is still at the lower end. Of most cities.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, um I would make a motion to through resolution twenty twenty five dash four five seven. Fee schedule update for business license fee. Um increasing the business license fee from ten dollars to twenty five dollars.
First and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to caution us that. We don't get into the habit of doing something because everybody else is. Um I think it's still behoves us to take a look and really do our due diligence. Uh to make sure that that particular situation, whatever it is. Uh is viable and we're not just doing it to get jumping off the bridge because everybody else is. So. Let me make that.
I I just have a question. Do, we know how much extra revenue that fifteen dollars will bring in? What's projected to bring in? Did that?
We have not made that calculation.
So do we know how many people this will affect? I mean, we have that.
Oh, uh uh as in the number of business licenses.
Yeah.
Honestly, yeah. That we would, we can get those numbers for you, but yeah, I I don't know that. It's out of my head.
Any further discussion? All they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Wes?
Move again. Okay, so for ordinance uh twenty twenty five dash twelve twenty nine. This is related to the issue we discussed at the previous city council meeting in terms of. Of when monthly sewer charges start for um sewer. And 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 as you all discussed, and I think came to a agreement, um. We want to clarify that uh monthly charges start at the time of insulation and and when uh the. Uh sewer inspection is passed, because there was. Disagreement about if it started at the time of occupancy or at the time of of installation. And so, and 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 right now, there, there was no. Clarity on that in the books and this will clarify.
I wasn't aware that we had all agreed that this. At installation instead of occupation.
I don't think we did all agree.
Did we? Okay.
Well, I I didn't agree to it, but I know that, but maybe I wasn't clear enough.
Well, that was my general takeaway. So so if I'm wrong, you know, please cooperate.
There's always three.
I'm up to a coincidence twenty twenty. Twenty twenty five dash one two two nine amending S M C thirteen point one open O eighty. But I had a monthly super chargers begin after installation and passage of inspection.
Well, first and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Wes?
Um actually, for for F and D, I'd like to turn that over to Robert. Um although I'll I'll just.
Sorry.
I I was perceptive by saying um Robert um looked at our. Uh code and found that there was no official policy on the small works roster. And and essentially, this ordinance and resolution would clarify that.
The state recently increased the amount that you can have for your small works roster. A small work roster just assists the city in not having to go out to bid. For another contractor. So what you're doing is you're bypassing that, but you have to have your ordinance and your resolution in place and the policy. Which then your public works would follow when they decide whether or not they're gonna go out to someone who's on our small work roster. So with that recent change in the. State legislature, it became clear that we didn't even have an ordinance on our books. So we put one together and. And now put it out for the council to review. And it's, again, it's not a carte blanche. It just simply says that we don't have to go get three different bids for any projects under a certain dollar amount. And your ordinance will address the dollar amount, and then your policy will give direction to public works and how they can actually contact and contract ultimately. You ultimately still approved dollars going to let the door. Same as every other. I'd move to accept uh ordinance twenty twenty five twelve thirty small works roster. Reaffirming the city's small works roster processing procedures.
Second.
Go, yeah, go ahead, Pat.
All right, so first and second, any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, uh the follow up resolution.
Uh I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash four five day small work roster policy manual. Um, yeah.
Second. Yeah, first and a second, any discussion? All they say aye.
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 Good. And who is gonna walk us through the USDA loan resolution?
I will take this. Um for the USD loan resolution, we need authorization to transfer out of our cashmere valley loan. That we had in place for the construction of the pump stations. Uh this will transfer into the USDA land. And it will also grants or give us the USA USDA grant of seventy thousand six hundred dollars. We did pass a resolution authorizing. This back in May, but we need this final, or we passing ordinance allowing this back in May, that we do need this final resolution of passive.
So this is a. Resolution or an ordinance?
This is a resolution. We have the ordinance.
We approved the ordinance in May, right?
This is just, we're in the very final stages of transferring into our USDA funding, which was the intention from the beginning. But in order for us to do that, we need this.
And I'm moved to uh make a motion through the USDA loan resolution. Uh authorizing USDA loan in the amount of eight hundred seventy three thousand. And grant in the amount of seventy thousand six hundred for the city water and sewer system.
A second. First and second, is there any discussion? All they say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, sewer ordinance implementation discussion.
Yeah, I can take that one as well. I was just gonna walk through. We had a request of. What we've done so far and how we're planning on implementing this. So I've done kind of written out and broken out. Um our first step was to finish the draft of the connection letter that will go out to all affected property owners. We have completed that task. Um secondly, was to reach out to all affected property owners that will be immediately affected via phone call. Um I have reached out to probably ninety percent of them. The ones I haven't, I was unable to connect and I left messages. I've reached out. Yep, I left the little voice now. I checked to see if he sent them. There was a one or two that we were unable to. Track phone numbers down on, but I did send emails. I heard back from one of them and again was able to contact him and. Walk them through their next steps in the process. Robert is currently working on a connection agreement form. Um early September, those connection letters that city staff drafted and the connection agreement that Robert will draft. Will go out in early September to all the affected residents. We, that city staff are here to assist the residents as much as possible, and we made that explicitly clear in both of the letters. And as far as next steps after that, we have created a tracking document to monitor the progress. And the status of each property owner, as the letters do come back with their different intentions. Appeals requests are also in there. It's stated that they need to be returned within the ninety days. As staff receives those, we will coordinate with council to set up the meetings for appeals. The letters need to be returned within a hundred days of receiving it. As we receive letters that discuss the intent to connect or looking to enter the overall program, they've reached. Or work with each individual law owner. All those. Uh for those wishing to connect within that eighteen month period, we will work on them to make sure the permits and everything get in place. And assist them however we can. And we'll be continuing to track progress to make sure they do connect within those eighteen months. And again, assist those individuals and track the timeline for those who entered with the program. And they will be charged a half rate penalty charge once they enter that program. If we receive no response within the six months, a hundred and eighty days, the whole penalty will be charged monthly. Yeah, my last one. The city staff will continue to monitor those who choose to connect within those eighteen months to ensure we can assist as much as possible and make. It as easy as possible. Those are the steps that we have identified and lined out. We've started working on proactively.
Is is there any language in these letters that actually invites people to come into the city office to talk?
I don't know if this directly says, hey, come talk to us, but it does explicitly say we are here to assist you in any way, shape or form. Please reach out or come in.
Might be kind of a night, yeah, the letters haven't gone out yet.
No, no.
It might be nice to include that and also be um any reference to the the ordinance. On page twelve that gives them, it outlines possible exemptions. Exceptions, so so they know how to exercise the options if they choose to do so.
The intent is to make it in blocks so that they can see it, checkbox, however you want it, but I think I'm. Mr. What I'm thinking from you is that in the letter, we want to include a. Invitation to come in and sit down uh with public work.
Gentlemen tonight, but it was a box, that would.
Yeah.
Yeah. It indicated that it was gonna cost him about eighty thousand dollars to do it. Um. Obviously, that five percent threshold on assessed property values can make him a candidate for exemption. Then I think he should know that.
Yeah.
I walked through with everyone that I talked to, all four options that they have, including the process.
Uh Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. On. What? On on the implementation.
Um I'll give, well, I don't know if anybody's ready to. All right, what's your motion?
Um I'm gonna like to motion that we postpone the implementation. Of the new sewer ordinance until after the first of the year.
Second, what were you doing?
No, yeah, I'm done.
Well, I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
The reason that I'm bringing this up is, number one, um. I think that we have a violation of our ordinances. Uh specifically, section nine. Uh excuse me, our policies and procedures. Um. I'm sorry, Mr. Cox, are you talking about the, the council member handbook? Section nine ordinances. Oh, second, ordinance of the handbook. Yeah. Thanks. Yes. Um. It says um. That the two readings of an ordinance are required, except when there's an urgent need. Ordinances. Regarding financial franchise agreements must be adapted very good meeting, but. Um I know there was discussion about this at the the last council meeting that I wasn't here for. Um. But I feel like we've uh. Were in direct violation with that. Um and I went back and. Reviewed the the tape. Um and when um. Mr. Rice brought up the, this issue. Um. I, Mr. Muth uh said, quote, I didn't see the agenda, but it's my understanding. That's what we're doing tonight, referencing the the first reading. Um tonight, the first reading, but the second reading had been waived, so you could vote tonight if you want to. Then a little later on, he said, you do not have, you do not have to have a second reading in light of the changes you made. In the workshop, but if you wish to have a second reading, that is certainly the council's prerogative. Which is in violation again of that particular ordinance or that section. Um mayor made the comment of, well, we have had a first and a second reading and the changes have been, there was nothing substantial. Um we have not had, we did not have a first and second reading of this. And so we are. My opinion, we're violation of this, and we need to have a second reading of this ordinance before it's put in place. Additionally, um. We have asked repeatedly about where we are financially in regards to, to the payments of the. Um. The payments of the. Loans and things, and we have not gotten that information. We've requested it several times. Um. We do not have our finance director in place yet. The information for our. Fees are based on the, I think it's a twenty twenty three. Cost study that was done. It's not based on current costs. We do not have that current, that current financial status. So those are my reasons for requesting that. This uh be postponed until after the first of the year.
Any further discussion?
Well, I agree with Mr. Cox, of course, um and I. Think that we should probably have. I'm hoping that the other council members will take heed to this, because. We put ourselves in legal liability if we're violating the plane meeting of this. Uh of what our research is doing. And I would suggest at a bare minimum that we hold off on this. Until the first year that we pass this. And a bonus of caution. Um and get an opinion from a different attorney as well, because we got an opinion from the first one, and I I believe that our attorney is wrong. And um and also one way to look at this is, we're not gonna be losing that much revenue, because we've actually had no forecast of how much extra revenue we're gonna get in three months. So there's really no financial reason to not. Um. Be cautious. That's into my comments.
Any further discussion?
My question would be, why are we? First of all, who who would adjudicate this? And secondly, why wait till after the first of the year? We have an opportunity to do a second reading next month.
Well, you have a finance director that's going to be coming into place. We should already be, you know, the first portions of our two thousand twenty six budget. So we know what kind of a fire hose that that finance director is gonna be going into. Trying to, trying to get the twenty twenty six budget done before December thirty first. And so that workload is gonna be tremendous on Southwest and. And that new finance director, besides learning everything else about the, our budget. Um additional, additionally, um. I really think it's, it's hard for us to sit here and and. Have this ordinance go into place and pass the red face test, especially with these twenty seven people that are gonna be impacted immediately. So.
Basically, I would ask the question, who's going to communicate? And does this, would this invalidate? The uh the ordinance that we passed last month?
It would, it would invalidate it because you haven't had the second reading.
Is there a reason why the second reading couldn't be next month?
Could be. But you also, but you also have a finance director that needs to come up with all of those other figures and things first.
Why?
Because I'd like to, I myself, I would like to know where we are financially in regards to, in regards to getting. Everything in line and make sure that all of our fees are correct. We're talking about charging penalties to people. Based on two thousand twenty three figures. I mean, we know that we've made payments. I mean, we know that we've made payments to those loans and things. So where are we at financially? How come anybody, how come we can't be told where we're at?
We.
I'm not sure what that has to do with the ordinance.
Um, that's what I'm trying to get at as well.
It, the ordinance directly is affected by how much we pay per month. Those figures are based off of the cost study that the ordinance references.
Charge.
So we go back to the original ordinance?
Yeah.
I think the motion was implementation, that there's a pause on the implementation.
Correct.
But you know, so you're right, that that you could do it next month. I think there's just other reasons not to, but but you're right. I mean, so to be cautious, you would have a second reading. And you would pass this until the second reading happened, and then you.
If what you're saying was true, we've we've already violated.
Yeah, I I would.
That's right.
So that's right.
Mr. Mayor, I I I'd like to ask a clarifying question to Robert in terms of what what constitutes a second reading? Because in my understanding, how it gets it just by title only and 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 a first and second reading can happen at the same meeting. Am I?
Yes, it can.
I I just wanted to make sure I I that they didn't have to be split up.
Okay. Yeah, my my understanding is this opportunity to get input and introduce changes. And then if you need to have another second reading after you've introduced the changes, they could just go on forever. So we had multiple ratings. And we introduced changes and we had.
But we did have multiple readings. When we had the multiple readings, because I only know that we had one last meeting.
Because it came up. We had a workshop. And then we had, we came up, we had a workshop with the changes. We had another reading.
No, those aren't readings, though. Those are readings of the ordinance.
There's been a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I think there was such discussion going on there.
I back to.
No, I'm just trying to say that we've only had one legally, one reading last time. We haven't had a second.
And you have to give the public the opportunity to review that in the first reading, you have to give them the second.
We can we get a legal opinion from our attorney?
I mean, you have, you have a council handbook that requires two or states such two, but has a caveat for it. State does not mandate a two reading. So it's a local issue. So whether or not somebody was to come in and say that he didn't have a second reading, and so you're nullifying the ordinance, that would depend on the specific circumstances of this ordinance, the process that it went through. My recollection is we've had more than three or four opportunities for public comment on it, and that the last workshop, the big board that you went down fifteen, sixteen different issues with the ordinance were all resolved, and then the reading was done. You've had the vote on it. But I mean, obviously, your council uh, rulebook has a two readings unless uh, circumstances. It's not a state mandated rule. My recollection is that you had multiple meetings. So potential outcome for a challenge would depend on the specific circumstances and whether the procedural defect is deemed significant enough to nullify the ordinance. That would be the standard should this matter go to someone outside of this room. Yeah. Based on everyone's recollection, you get to decide whether or not you had two readings or were you more than two readings. Certainly not here to make that definitive statement.
Well, we know last meeting was the first reading, correct?
I I disagree with that.
But Mr. Muth, you stated.
The ordinance was in progress before I joined.
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance has been going around. I I realize what I said, Mr. Right, or Mr. Cox. Uh, certainly don't want to take away from that, but it came up that moment. Do we have to have a second read?
Yes.
And my and my advice was you didn't have to. If you want one, you can have.
You said, you said the second reading has been waived.
I said you can waive.
And you could vote tonight if you wanted to. No one, no one, no one waived it at that point when you made that comment.
No, you made a motion subsequently over my comment and then went forward with ratifying your ordinance. There wasn't a separate motion made. Do we want to deem this a second reading? You're right. That motion didn't.
Okay, so that's good that that's verified that there wasn't a second reading.
At that meeting, I don't believe that that was.
That season on the first.
Yeah.
Anyway, my motion still stands.
Also, real good. Uh, because I didn't say any while we were going back and forth on this. I think that we've had, I I guess the disagreement is whether or not we had a second reading of the final product. Because the second reading of the ordinance, we had have had readings of the ordinance with public comment multiple times throughout the the couple of years that we've been working on this. So this wasn't a first reading of the ordinance. There were some changes made, and it was the first reading since all the changes were made, but that doesn't necess that is not spelled out as that's the first reading ever of the of the ordinance. So my my view of what this says, again, I'm not saying anything, but my my view of it, my view of it, there was well, more than two times we read over the ordinance, changes were made based on those readings. But that's not the to say that there was that there were. That's the reason that we've kept going over is because we made adjustments, and then we got to the final version, which was what we as a council passed last month. So I'm not saying that that we saw that exact word to word every line more than one time. But the ordinance itself, we saw on multiple occasions with public comment throughout the years. It I don't think that is even.
Yeah, I guess the spirit of having multiple readings is to introduce changes if necessary.
And make adjustments. So that it does that.
I think I'm just looking at it differently and and who that that those, all those discussions for the last year were creating the ordinance. That wasn't voting on the ordinance or reading the ordinance. That was, no, I'm just saying that that was a creation of a final ordinance, and we had the final ordinance, and we've had a first read. In my view, would you have a first reading of that final ordinance and a second reading? So I'm looking at it like it's a cleaner process than you are, but that's okay. It doesn't mean, I mean, one of us is probably right.
It's just we're not seeing this the same way, but I.
That's how I look at it. It's cleaner. When's your first reading and it's clear? And when's your second when it's clear? So that's just, that's how my brain is working.
Do you understand what you're saying? I I just disagree that that's the the
Okay.
the way that this is, the way that this comes out, I'm not, but I'm not invalidating what you're you're saying in that. We just see it different, so. Sorry, Mr. Ray, that was my, I wanted to make sure I introduced on that. Uh, state your motion again, and we will vote yes or no.
Uh, folks want the implementation of the the new sewer ordinance until after the first of the year.
All papers say hi.
All right.
All of those. All right, motion denied or does not care. Um, I'm glad that you guys took the time to make special handouts and surprise us with a motion.
Uh, this was just discovered actually this afternoon at the library. They've printed out, I mean, I more research.
All right, well, again, a little more. There's a lot at this table that insist on a little bit more heads up to prepare for a motion and to get their thoughts together. This was a surprise. So.
It was a surprise to me too, that it was so clear. So so I don't I don't really need.
For the record, they will let know that a motion was made. It was not on the agenda. This council took action on that motion.
Actually, the item was on the agenda.
The item was actually on the agenda with the implementation.
I understand that, but I'm just.
And you can make a motion of anything that's on the agenda. This, I know, you know that, Robert.
I'm I do. I'm just letting you know that.
Okay, so I don't have to call the mayor or anybody else and say, I want to make a motion on the agenda.
If it's on the agenda, yes, sir. You're correct.
Martin, you're correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
You have some information items in your packet for your perusal. Um, where are the vouchers?
Not received them.
All right, I will need some input from city council members in the next couple of days to peruse and sign the vouchers. Does anyone have any reports for the greater good?
I can report that, uh, as you heard from the undersheriff White Cop, that we didn't meet with them and it started with along with Wes, we started that process. I think I think it's going to be pretty favorable as far as the city goes, but also for the county sheriff to be able to continue with that with that contract. So looking forward to getting that final nice.
Mr. Cox, do you see any, um, changes or big changes that would be notable in that period?
With that contract or the law enforcement contracts? Uh, just there'll be a um, an increase in the contract, but nothing as far as the language goes within the contract and the deliverables.
Really? So round negotiations are still the same deliverables?
Same basic deliverables, yeah, that we've talked about so far, yeah. We just need to make sure that the budget is capable to handle it.
Uh, I have one. I met informally with the the head librarian and talked about the 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 levy, the, yeah, um, and it and because I was unaware whether or not I I didn't go back and check. It was down by forty votes or what have you, but it actually passed. Um, in Scaminia County, it also passed overall. Um, so anyway, that's just a informational that that I confirmed today that it that it did pass, so.
I'd like say so. Read it.
I'm done, yes.
Yeah, hey, could we make this a part of the official record of the minutes? Could I pass it out as part of the discussion? Would that be possible? I hand out.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Is it?
Um, is that for both?
Uh, yeah, both the, oh, no, just for this.
Okay.
Yeah, since we voted. Yeah.
All right, this is an opportunity for additional public comment on anything that we've discussed this evening. All right, anything that as a group you would like to add to the agenda this morning? All right, meeting adjourned seven nineteen.
That.
Yeah. After as many items as we have.
That's what I was like that I'm saying.
It's.